Recording is started. All right, it is 6:57 a.m. on Tuesday, March the 8th. I'm Sam Emile, President of the Oaks Public School Board. I'm calling the meeting to order here at the Oaks Public Schools Conference Room. Let's please stand. I pledge allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The agenda was in your packet. Are there any adjustments needed today that you know of? All right, is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Nagel moves to approve. Is there a second? I'm but seconds. Any discussion? Any discussion regarding the agenda? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Motion passes. I'd like to recognize the visitors present in the room. All directors are present, visitors. We have staff, Mrs. Sell, Mr. Beta, Business Manager Herring, and Superintendent Getz. Joining us on Zoom is Kathy Warren. And that reminds me that I'll ask everyone, please, to speak clearly and project your voice so that all can hear both in the room and on our recording and the Zoom meeting. So, thank you all for coming. Start out with the next item on the agenda, Public Communications. Let's see, there was no public, no specific public communications, no cards or anything to be read. But there is one shout out, so.
There's two.
Two. Okay, I was.
I emailed it. I got the invoices. So, yeah, there is a two.
Okay. All right, well, I'll go then. I feel our elementary teachers are working so hard to give our students the best education possible. They go out of their way to work with students individually to try to meet every student's need, and they work through behavioral situations and challenging students. So, that was submitted by anonymous. I could just write your glasses. This is a good test for my new lenses. Also, anonymous. Shout out to Mr. Getz for coaching the girls' team through a successful season. We truly appreciate your willingness to step up and coach, as I am sure it was not part of your plan when accepting the superintendent position last spring. There can be an overwhelming amount of drama with all those teenage girls trying to work together, but you kept their attention on the game. Thank you, Mr. Getz. So, thanks to those that submitted those and to the honorees. Anything else? With that, then we'll move on to the reports. The reports were in your packet. Did anyone have any questions about the reports, concerns, or items they'd like to highlight?
I'd like to talk about the report.
Okay.
So, I've been contacted a couple of different times about this local local beef to the school program. So, I've done some checking into it, and I have talked with Mr. Getz April. And then after this report came home, I finally got a chance to talk with Jira too. So, I think there was some miscommunication about what Dylan isn't trying to get his own beef into the school. He has just came across this program and has an interest in trying to get North Dakota beef into North Dakota schools, which I think makes a lot of sense too. So, and that's what the, his push was, just to try to get it, to try it out. So, talking with Jira, she had said the commodities money is what the biggest holdup she sees for it. And I said, well, isn't there some way we could just at least try it to see, you know, switch everything over? She's saying that there's no commodities order for me. So, I thought it makes sense to try a meal or two with this program during May. Because the cost difference is $10 difference on a a whole day's meal, you know, 67 pounds of meat served is approximately what it takes to serve a meal for a day at a school.
It's gotta be a bigger cost difference than what you want to get.
But they're not ordering any commodities beef in May.
But if we decide to go that program, it's gonna be a little bit more expensive than $6 and $7.
You can use that commodities for other food items rather than just beef. She's been using it as the beef.
But that's the way I was understanding.
There's other things that you can purchase. There's all the chicken products could be purchased through there. There's all the, there's a lot of fruits and vegetables that can be purchased through there.
Well, then it makes more sense.
There's a lot of things that can be purchased through the commodities.
I was also contacted by you letting me do this. Pushing the beef as well as talking about getting like our local potatoes. That wasn't my decision as an individual member, but.
Anything else? All right. Any other comments on any of the other reports? Anything to highlight?
You probably didn't get to.
You know.
I didn't send it as a attachment, just updated the package.
I see, okay. But the invoices were in attachment.
Yes, yeah, because they get lost.
Sure. Oh, go ahead, Robert.
Is, if the principal's report still.
Sure.
The, for Anna, on the the science science of reading. If you elaborate, I clicked on that link and looked at it a little bit.
So, the science of reading, as brain research has expanded, they've realized that, you know, as they can see inside there, what is important as far as learning to read. So, they, there's a sequential order, or it should be in sequential order, how kids learn how to read. You know, first they develop phonological awareness. So, when your little language is what you hear. And then kids might be really good at what they hear, you know, and they can speak really well, and you think, oh, they're gonna be really great readers. But then the next step is they have to learn to turn that into written language. So, the science of reading is the study, the research that's gone into now how we know how kids learn how to read. Now, do 100% of people agree with it? No, there's different camps on how reading is learned. You know, some people also believe that reading is learned across the content areas. So, you know, if you're in social studies, you can learn to read in there, but there's just these different camps. But the state of North Dakota is now going with the science of reading and schools are required to provide PD for their elementary teachers. And it shouldn't really be all of the teachers, but as of this point, it's just my elementary teachers that are required to have PD in the science of reading so that we have a better understanding of reading. And you know, when it first came down the pipe, I thought, okay, I want just one more thing for us to do. But quite honestly, I taught fourth, fifth, and sixth grade language arts here for eight years, nine years. And I remember when the kids got to me, and it would be like, why can't these kids know? Why don't they know how to read? And what are the teachers doing on the other end that they're not doing right? And I thought they should come to me, and they should be able to read. And I didn't have the understanding of why they couldn't read. But now my teachers will have that understanding or at least a base of it. So, we're required to provide PD for our teachers. Now, the state has not, they haven't finished regulations, or they don't know exactly how many hours they want us to provide PD for, or what we have to do. So, schools, it's up to us to make that decision. So, we decided to start out earlier this year to have the teachers watch four hours of videos from, I think it's Ed Webinar or Ed Net, I can't remember what the name of it is. They're required to watch PD, oh, edweb.net, four hours. And they can use that as part of their seven hours of PD that they're required to do. But if they've already done those seven hours, which we have a lot of teachers that do summer stuff, then we will pay them per hour for doing that because it's outside of school that they're watching that. But we also, as the years gone on, we've come across other things we can provide for our teachers. So, if they don't want to watch those four videos, or they didn't get them quite yet, or they've already watched them, they want more. We have purchased book, Shifting the Balance, and I've got it in my office if you want to look at it. Pretty easy read, goes through the science of reading, they can read that. I have teachers that watch videos and the book. But then we also sent Alicia Beta, who went with Alicia. Kelly Bruin and Kelly Gepfer to the Letters Training at SEC, which is in Fargo. And it's a pretty encompassing class that they have to take. Alicia's probably spent a lot of hours reading and meeting with Kelly and Kelly and with each other and planning what they're going to do. And then they're going to be presenting, like Train the Trainer. So, on Friday morning, the teachers are coming in at 7:30. All of my elementary, that includes FIA and music, and also some of Brandon's teachers are coming in. And they're going to be instructed or informed or, you know, taught by the teachers that are being sent off to the Letters Training about the science of reading. And then I know there are teachers that will want to do the science of reading next year when they have a chance to do it because it is very interesting and informative and actually, I mean, it obviously makes your practice better in the area of reading, so. And we're gonna have to be required that not, our programming, or we have to have some kind of a systematic programming for phonics instruction that starts K-1, 2, or till the kids can read at a proficient level. And we're gonna have to provide something that is aligned with the science of reading. So, right now, we're doing the research of that. We've got some different options. We've got an option right now that's free that we're using as an intervention that we could possibly use. And the good thing about these programs is they're individualized, and they are also adaptive. So, let's say one child comes in and he already has his phonics base, and he's got phonetic awareness, and he gets through it quickly. He'll be at a little bit quicker pace than a child that it maybe takes a little longer. The goal is that by third grade, they're reading proficiently, but that doesn't always happen. So, then we might have to carry, you know, some of those, that instruction is a little harder up.
Do you have a reading intervention now?
Tara is our Title I person, so she works with them. Nope, she, yeah, she's located over here, but she is, she goes into all the grades, and she provides some of those interventions. A lot of our interventions are done by our special ed unit. But we don't have one specifically for K through three intervention, but we have next year. Well, next year, our staffing plans, I don't know if Mr. Getz has told you. We, our staffing plans are the extra person that was down on this and that we're doing the change and shifting. We'll be providing reading interventions down on the K through three and most of the morning, and then they'll be coming up to hell about four, five, or six because our class sizes are smaller now, so.
Good question, good answer. Anything else, Robert? And we should give Mr. Beta some time to. Something you wanna highlight? Sorry to put you on the spot. I don't want to get done before 8 o'clock.
Good morning. Highlighting our February students of the month, we had Lena Sun beat in next time for junior high, and Sam Permiss of Trace School, Woodford High School. Congratulations to those four students. Andrew Vista was awarded the S R C T C February Award of Excellence. So, congratulations to Andrew and his family on recognition. Carrie Tyer was welcomed into the honorable mention team for Academic Allstate. That was released just shortly. He gets a nice certificate that we'll present to him in an awards banquet here later this spring. And then we had Dylan Quan qualify for state bath counts. You'll be traveling to Visomaric. For some reason, he gets sick, or Bill Tenen, that Sweet Jackson would be the alternate there. So, a few things to highlight there for students. And I guess all the other things kind of informational, but if you look at number five, we are working on standards-based grading work for the junior high especially. But since we're doing some training, we're gonna have all departments involved in that process with a goal of transitioning to that next fall for the junior high and the following year then for the high school. And just to sum it up, instead of you as a parent seeing a 1, 2, 3, or 4 on our score or report card, you'll still see a letter grade. It's just the letter grade will be totally assigned to where they are on that proficiency scale. So, it's kind of a really nice bridge between what the elementary is doing and then to what we need in the high school, and we have that letter grades for GPA and transcripts. So, we'll be doing that both twice a month for the department, so we have to get twice a month. If all works out.
That was gonna be my question, is how that, how that transitions? How you transition standards-based rating to a letter grade? Can you give me more detail on that?
So, like, what we'll do is, yeah, so like, if you're assessing now what the kids are actually doing for learning and not just doing by like what percent they get right or wrong, and look to see actually what do they understand on our target? And you give them a 1, 2, or 3, whatever you number you're gonna assign them, that will correlate to a certain letter grade. And then if we get it in between, so let's say, for example, Ryan, you get a 3, a 3, and a 2, right? So, if you add up the last three assessments we gave you on that standard, you're gonna have eight points divided by three. That average then is gonna be where you'd be on the grade scale. You know, kid will agree. So, rather than just doing total points on assignments, it's gonna look actually to what they learned on that standard that they're working on, or multiple standards if you're covering them all. So, we'll still see a letter grade, and a parent will be able to click and see and expand out to what they've done on that standard and see how well worked they really struggled on that standard.
So, the work when they get an assignment, it'll be graded on a percentage, like how they, how do you figure out?
Right, so that'll be like test each other. Yep, so that'll be, instead of looking at a total score, like a whole thing, it might be broken down to like, if you're gonna test, they usually test on maybe three or four, five standards. You know, break down scoring to those standards. So, maybe you've got 1 through 4 is this standard you did well, but the next session you just bombed, right? Well, instead of saying you did poorly in the whole test, or you say on this standard, you're good, but here we gotta redo work on this one. So, it's still having them complete work, it's still assigning them a letter grade, but it's more specific on what they would account with or not, right? Whereas if you see a 80% right now, just doing the 80%, you don't really know what their area of weakness or strengths, right? It's just an overall picture. So, it's trying to really dirl out to where kids might be. That's exactly what the elementary is.
Does that transfer over to GBA?
You're still gonna see a letter. So, like, for parents, you're not gonna see much different parent, kids, you see a letter. It's still gonna be GPA, it's just a matter of how we're gonna measure and get that, that letter grade. That's gonna have to change.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Getz, for your report, are there any items in your report that are not covered later, late? Possibly, you wanna give us a highlight?
I will extend, just because the way he finished there. One of the things that, I have Greg working on a book right now, looking at something that I received down at the conference was about the standard-based grading and how the teacher is going to look at it at standard-based grading. So, I didn't really know exactly where we're at, if that was gonna be something that was good for the elementary or more in the middle school, high school. So, Greg, that's why I have Greg giving me that second opinion on that. But that is a book that we're looking at possibly doing as a book study that came from down there. I know there was a number of things, and I, to be honest with you, that's the one that stuck out the most down there. Brandon and Anna, I think, and Greg were probably pretty sick of me by the end of the first day that I kinda hadn't taken a break the second day from text. Just all the different things, it was like, hey, do you guys think of this? Just little one-liner things that came out. And I think they inspire, excuse me, were inspired by some of it too because they're like geek, goofy, all guppa. They were giving me that back just as much as I was giving it to them. But it was, it was awesome for them to respond the way they did because it helped me understand that. Yeah, I'm starting to catch up to some of the things that they're talking about. Some of those things are already here, some of those things are going to be new. Like, this book is something that would maybe help Mr. Beta with that transition. And how does that look as a teacher, narrowing it down and dialing in? And the other nice thing is it gives you some, what you can do right now versus just here's, here's ideas, but you're never gonna have work on those, or what's gonna happen. It gives you actual thoughts behind what to do. So, there's some pieces there. The other thing, when you go to a conference like that, it's just the networking. And it was, it was really good to be able to meet people from other states. There's some, I've got some different contacts of things that they're going through here that it just gives us another resource of somebody to reach out to. So, that's probably the biggest part of all that, but anytime you go to a conference, that's kind of normal.
Any other questions or comments on any of the reports? Sorry, I didn't read dates. Was it, is it good?
He was tired of winter.
Yeah, we got one of us. All right, so with that, is there a report, a motion rather, to approve all of the administrative reports as presented? I'm but, moves to approve the reports. Is there a second?
Second.
Nagel, seconds. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Next, next item is action items, and the first item on our agenda is the superintendent's evaluation. I'd like to thank the board members for the very timely completing of your evaluation reports and for including many positive and constructive comments. According to our policy, C A A B, all board members must rate the superintendent as either satisfactory or unsatisfactory in each of 10 areas, and any discrepancies in the ratings in any individual performance area must be discussed and a decision reached through a roll call vote. In the past, we have, since I've been on the board, we've acted on one single motion to approve a satisfactory rating in each category. This time, one, there is one discrepancy in one area, and so we must act on at least that area separately. And we may choose to act on and discuss each area separately. Many boards do, we don't have to. What are your wishes to say in that area? I would entertain a motion either to act on each item separately or to act on the nine as a single motion, discuss that, and then act on the one with the discrepancy separately.
I'll make that motion.
You'll, okay, so.
Just make motion for the nine and discuss the other one.
Okay, Ryan Rosendahl moves to act upon all nine areas in which there was no discrepancy in a single motion. Is there a second? I wonder if we should have whole educational leadership on separately as well. Is there a second? Is there a second? If not, is there another motion?
I would like to act on two of them separately, the supervision and the educational leadership.
And that's a motion.
Yes.
Nagel moves to act on the two, on two areas separately. Supervision of licensed and nonlicensed staff and educational leadership, and act on the other seven areas in a single motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thor, second. Is there any discussion on the motion to act upon those in that manner? Sorry. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes. I would entertain a motion to act on the eight areas. Seven, aren't there 10? 1, 2, 3, 4, no, there are 10. Well, you said seven. Did I?
Yeah, it'd be eight. Okay. Adjust that, which.
I'll entertain a motion to, for a status, to approve a satisfactory rating for Mr. Getz in the eight domains in which there were no discrepancies, and also the others besides educational leadership and supervision of licensed and unlicensed staff. April will clean that up, I'm sure. I will make that motion. Nagel moves to approve a satisfactory rating in the eight domains, other than the two we're acting on separately. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thor, seconds. Is there any discussion? And I would really encourage you, I've highlighted a few of the comments that I will bring forward, but is there any discussion that anyone else would like to start with? I'll just highlight a few of the comments that I have that were made by board members in these domains. And I'll start with relationship with the board. It's interesting that, you know, some of our comments contradict one another, which is not surprising because our, our, our interactions with Mr. Getz are all different and somewhat limited within the scope of his vast interactions with all of the stakeholders. Here are three. Here are some, some comments under relationship with the board. Need to delegate some responsibilities to others. I've observed evidence of more delegation in the second half of the year. Dave needs to make sure he is delegating duties. So, different perceptions, not surprising. Appreciate all the reports being included in the board packet. Prepared to discuss all of the information on the agenda. Worked across, worked on the concerns of the board when we hired him to help improve the accountability across the district. Any other comments on that domain? Recruitment and retention, a couple of comments, favorable comments with relation, related to the vacancy in the science position and being creative and everyone agreeing that's not the best solution, but it's the best we had available at the time. Also, staff recruitment and retention, the district has made strides in recent years, but it remains to be seen if that will continue right now. Skipping supervision, identification and implementation of board policy needs. Seems prepared to answer questions and makes recommendations. Works together with business manager hearings, bring policy recommendations to the board. Any other comments? Financial management has provided detailed information to the board for several substantial unexpected expenditures. Financial management skills are conservative and effective. Has brought long-term concerns to the attention of the board. Has implemented ideas for the, or ways to increase revenue from non-traditional sources. Any other comments? Skipping educational leadership, relationship with students and parents. Thorough an investigation and follow-up on recent concerns. Handled situations promptly and professionally effective in relationships with students and parents. Relationship with community. Sorry, did anybody have anything else you wanted to say on that? Mr. Getz is a visible part of the community. More can be done to educate the public on PCBL, as most still do not know what this looks like. Faithfully attends school events, good presence in the community, highly active in his relationships with the community, and attends almost every O P S activity. Comments? Effective records management, the one that is the most difficult to make any comment on, there was one comment, no known deficiencies in this area. Supervision of buildings and grounds, transportation, and student safety. Plumbing project was disappointing with the amount of time it took to get completed. The company should have been held more accountable. Good job of selling the APALA for a higher price than expected. Makes good recommendations, nice job of explaining the work that needs to be done, handled by him personally, gives detailed explanations. Brought a great deal of information to the building committee to help make longer-term decisions for the district. Anything else? All right, then we have a motion on the floor to approve a satisfactory rating on the eight domains that we have just highlighted. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Rosendahl?
Yes.
Thor?
Yes.
Nagel?
Yes.
Hi, Buck?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes, and that portion of the evaluation is approved. Next, I'll entertain a motion with, related to either supervision of licensed and nonlicensed staff or educational leadership, or both.
I'll make a motion to recommend satisfactory.
Thor moves to approve a satisfactory recommendation in the areas of supervision of license and nonlicensed staff and educational leadership. Is there a second? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Rosendahl, second. Is there any discussion? And again, I would point out, I will highlight that there were positive and negative comments in, in both areas. But these are the two areas that all board members had the lowest, their lowest ratings, and therefore great to pull them out and have some discussion. And for those that, I did share with the board this process that were required by policy and law to follow, and we can disagree. People can, board members can change their thoughts about their rating during discussion, and the rating that prevails is the majority. the rating that prevails is the majority, whether it be five to zero, four to one, or three to two, and that's the rating. So, with that, is there any discussion?
Oh my, comments. Um, and I know you and I talked about this too, but I would really like to see more interaction, positive interaction with the staff. Oh, I've been getting lots of comments that they don't feel like you're a positive presence in the classroom. Um, they say they go weeks without seeing you. Um, so I just think there needs to be more positive interaction with the staff. Learn, get to know them, you know, not, it doesn't have to be a friendship by any means, but I think, um, there needs to be some, some positive leadership, not just, we're gonna make changes and this is what we're gonna do. We need to have those discussions explained to them. You know, they need to be a part of the decisions to a degree of giving it.
Now, I'll follow that up with why I did the unsatisfactory rating. Apparently that's never been done before. I. I appreciate, I appreciate your courage and, um, and the opportunity for discussion.
And my reasoning behind that is going back through our November evaluation. I saw the same things popping up again and again. The, um, not a relationship, there's more time being spent in the classroom. And going back to our commitments that O P S respected genuine relationships and that needs to come from the top down. So, that's, um, that's my reasoning behind that. After I went through that and rated it, I couldn't, um, I couldn't justify satisfactory rating. I think you're doing wonderful in your other domains, so I'm not trying to bring you down with that, but that is something that has been kind of a red flag for.
Any other discussion?
I'll add that, I guess, looking at the job description and then going through our interviews and what we discussed when we were hiring superintendent. The guidance that I've tried to get across to Mr. Getz is that I think we've seen a lot of positive changes. I'm not getting complaints that I used to get last year all the time from or so on the public because I think you're getting somebody that's in charge in demanding accountability and when that happens, the people that have accountability brought to them may not be satisfied. So that's where those complaints, sounds like they're coming from and those complaints don't come to me. But the complaints that I was getting before about not having a leader in the school and those are, those are comments one. I'm pleased with what's happening and I maybe I'm wrong is that I don't, is the superintendent supposed to be in the classroom or is that the principal's duties and the teacher's duties? Would be my question.
Good question. Comments? Anything else, Robert? Okay, Ryan?
Um, I would say the same thing. I, I've not heard any negative comments about that. I would echo the same thing. The negative comments I used to hear, I no longer hear from community members as well. I hear positive comments about involvement in all activities, all leadership. I won't hear the, the other negative side from staff, I guess. Uh, maybe that's because they want to talk, I don't know, but, um, I anytime you have a transition in leadership style, you're going to see negative comments, you're gonna see people that get ruffled feathers by that. I guess, I, I mean, that's, that's what we're looking for in our in our superintendent interviews with somebody who's gonna take charge and be leader and do those things and I guess that's, sometimes that's what we see. So.
All right, thank you. Uh, I would just comment that I, I have had both positive and negative uh, comments about Mr. Getz in, in this area, primarily in the, the supervision area. Um, and I, I was, you know, I'm hearing in the regard to educational leadership, just his report this morning on his, uh, the book that he discovered and the interactions of superintendent's conference, um, you know, he's getting on board and, and understanding better and growing in the educational leadership with regard to where we are at, at Oak's Public Schools. When I, you know, again, we don't, we as board members don't interact with Mr. Getz in his role as a supervisor. And, um, so that's, that it's hard for us to evaluate that except by what we hear. And, uh, when I have thought, and even in the, in years past, when I'm thinking about evaluating a superintendent or evaluating this business manager, I've tried to reach out and talk to, uh, staff that have worked under other superintendents or at other districts with others, with other business managers. Uh, I mean, if all you ever knew was Tom Van Orde because you worked at Oak's Public Schools and he was, how would you know? And so, reaching out to staff that have worked under, in, in districts or under other superintendents, I find that is valuable, um, because they know of something else. And so, some of our staff have worked under only Oak's Public Schools' last superintendent in this one. So, um, it's a fairly narrow view of what a superintendent is. So, with that, um, you know, I wouldn't consider one or two really positive, uh, comments to, to be overwhelmingly positive and worthy of a four plus anymore than I would consider a few negatives worthy of a, of, of two minus rating. So, with that, is there any other discussion?
I have one more.
Yes.
Comment. You know, you and I were both on that attention.
Mm-hmm.
Task force and we worked really hard on that, the dollar amount, you know, that piece, but I think one thing that that task force left out was the culture of our school and, um, I think that's a piece that, that we as a district need to work on. It's not just you, I, we as a district need to work on that and that does need to come from the top down.
Correct. Good, good comments.
Um, I, I would have the question, is, is there an expectation in the job description of the superintendent to be active in the classrooms, to be doing those things? I guess, I don't know the answer to that. We could find that out in case Robert asked that, but.
Good question.
Because I, I could see it from both sides. I could see teachers being intimidated at the superintendent's in the classroom watching them kind of under microscope kind of thing where some might not like that, maybe some might like that, I guess, I guess. I don't know if we have a clear expectation of what that looks like.
And how shall we, how would we proceed to get that? Uh, I, do we rely on our superintendent and principals to come back to us with, well, here are the expectations for, um, because I know I can visit with my daughter-in-law who's at Northern Cass and she sees the superintendent quite regularly. Nick?
I should probably ask him for, I, I didn't have it.
Well, the one thing about being in the classroom is then there's seeing the struggles that our staff are going through.
Correct. And that would be the elementary principal saying, here's what we gotta do with the superintendent. Well, you know, they're the ones in charge of the teams, they go to superintendent, here's what we should do, let's go back together. Is it, do I want the superintendent going to each classroom saying, what are you struggling with today? What are you struggling with today? I don't, is, is that his job? I don't, that's my question. Is it in there? No, I don't know. But to me, that seems like a lot of a lot of responsibility for each individual classroom to expect them to go do all that, so.
I guess my piece on that was not necessarily having him in there supervising and doing that, but building those relationships with the teachers and.
Well, that wouldn't be in the classroom. That would be would be other things, would be other group things, I guess.
I'm just asking back from teachers saying they would appreciate that visibility in class.
Again, I'm not saying that's wrong, right or different, I'm just sort of thinking so, yeah.
I'm looking at the comments under both of those domains that we're discussing. And I'm not seeing a single reference to classrooms in that. Um, I do see that under where I gave an opportunity for additional comments. Need to be a visible presence in classrooms and uh, and delegate duties to ensure time to form relationships and be in classrooms more. So, it may be that we either do or we do not expect that classroom presence and we may want to delete those if that's not what we want to do. Now, we're not required to and I, you know, we are only required to approve all the comments in the event that we give a, an overall unsatisfactory rating in any specific area. I see no reason to delete those references, um, because we, we don't have to and it's, it was some, if, it wasn't a consensus of consensus of the board, but it was someone's comment. So, we, we do have a motion on the floor as we're discussing. Uh, is there any further discussion? Again, the motion being to approve a satisfactory rating in each of the two domains we're looking at, supervision of licensed and non-licensed staff and education leadership. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none. April, please call the roll. Rosenthal?
Yes.
Thor?
Yes.
Nagel?
Yes.
Hi Buck? Neil? Yes, motion passes. Four to one, thank you. Our next item on the agenda is the bus bids and clean diesel grant. I think there was a pretty good review in the packet. Who's leading that discussion?
So, uh, on the bus bids, we, we did have a grant that was applied for and received. The grant is going to be expiring. Um, if I remember correctly, it's September thirtieth of twenty twenty-two. So, if we want to take advantage of the twenty-two thousand eight hundred seventy-seven dollars, we would need to move forward with getting a purchase of a bus. To be honest with you, I don't know if that has to be paid before the bus shows up or not because of there's only one company that's probably gonna have this year by the time that comes.
Yep, so there's a, if there's a purchase agreement in order, uh, in place or whatever, the state is willing to work with the school on that reimbursement.
So that's what's brought us forward with why we're, went out and got the bus bids. So we're bringing the bids to you now. Um, there is the three, so if you wanna look at those, this is the one from Hartley's. Uh, that was the most expensive one at one twenty-four, one hundred twenty-four thousand. I don't know if anyone wants to look at that or not, but that's it. Yeah, okay, it's on the packet.
Yep.
Okay, um, coming from Dave, uh, he's not recommending that one, so I'm gonna set that one aside right away. The next one is from, uh, Harley, Harlow's up in Bismarck. And just so you're aware, that one can come, the first one can come in, uh, September or October. The second one here would be August or September for delivery dates, I did put that in the packet for you. Um, that one is the cheapest one at one oh eight with the two hundred dollars for the extra tires, the better, much snow tires. So, little over a hundred and eight there. The last one, and Dave's not recommending that one either, just because he likes the body style of the one from the high state. He likes those Thomases. Uh, I know at one point the Thomases did get better fuel mileage. Uh, I don't know if that's the same anymore just because the bus, this one, when a few years ago, they came out with international motor and they had a lot of troubles. Now they've switched to a Cummins. So I, this would be a newer style bus with the Cummins motor in it instead. So I think that would maybe deflect a little bit of the engine troubles that they had in the past. Now, be aware of the bus troubles that we're having that you're seeing down at the shop right now are this. That's one from Harlow's.
Okay, but he was recommending the.
He's recommending Thomas, Thomas one, which is the middle priced one.
Right.
Um, I can't remember exactly what that one came to, hundred sixteen, seven fifty. Um, so he's recommending that bus for purchase.
What's the delivery date on that?
That one was, I think, the latest one, January or February.
Of twenty-three.
Twenty-three.
Which could easily be summer.
Right, right now, that's kind of where they're at. They're all about that six month frame.
We had that last short bus we got, it took over a year to get and it was supposed to be.
And that was before.
And that was before all this stuff happened.
Yeah, I kind of wonder if there was troubles with the little buses and that was a reason for that because I know everybody across the state was having troubles with the little buses. The big buses seem to have a better chance of getting but the little ones, I think there must have been some kind of, there's such a high demand for it.
Sure. So then this would. This is gonna be, this, this would be in.
Go ahead, Ryan. So this would be.
You want me to press it?
No, sorry. Jerking my duties.
No, I was just asking a question.
Go ahead, Ryan.
Is this, so, so this would be in next year's budget then, either, either way, so.
Yep.
What is the budget that amounts to buses each year?
Um, every year we put in about eighty-five thousand for a new bus, um, usually because we have the grant to offset it. So that's what we put in. So we wouldn't be spending it this year.
Next year, so it would be in budget.
Another eighty-five thousand next year. And this should actually be replacing bus seven. Uh, because of the clean diesel grant, you have to remove one of the buses, the older buses, buses, whatever, and so they had chosen bus seven.
Would that get bus nine as a reserve bus then?
Yes, yes, I think he was gonna, he was gonna switch them around or whatever.
So does that bus get sold?
Um, it has to be out of commission.
They have to actually like drill a hole in the blocks, they have to put some stuff in there so that slugs the block up so that that can't be used. The frame has to be cut. Yeah, it's pretty expensive.
And it's only a certain eight or years that are lost.
And that's the school's responsibility to dispose of it.
Uh, yeah.
Built into the grant.
Yeah. Are we running out of qualifying buses? Do we have, how many more of these do we have to?
I thought there's only one I have to ask. I think there's one more, but, um.
It's one of those older ones.
Yeah. So if I understand correctly, we're, with the clean diesel grant, we're still going to exceed a yearly budget amount by about twenty thousand dollars, but we're not using this year's budget, so we'll, we'll be okay and we'll have, we'll budget another, we may wanna raise the budget amount next year because gonna get them for eighty thousand. So, but we're okay because we didn't buy a bus this year.
Yeah, yep. And I know that the applications for the clean diesel grants coming out in March. Um, so, as well as we can apply and if we get it, we get it. If we don't use it, we, you know, kind of the same thing situation right now, but I'll work with Dave on that and just see if there's any buses that he needs to, you know, wants to be replaced. Cause I know bus seven is set on the list for a few years.
So are you recommending that we act on this today so that we get, definitely get in the queue for?
Otherwise prices may change.
Sure, okay. All right.
Just one more question. And I'm assuming if Dave is recommending this Thomas, the other bus we used to have all kinds of problems too, was that? I know you can't answer it if you weren't here.
Why? That was international. And I, only reason I know that is because it wasn't just here that had problems.
All right.
It was across, um, I know Wilton had to put a new mortar in one of theirs. Um, Kier County had to put a new mortar in. There was another school that had been working and that was a twenty thousand dollar one that they got to get on. So, it wasn't just here. Yeah, it wasn't just. And then the E G R valves, that's pretty common with the international, it seems like.
Does that count?
Uh, a lot of them are inter- international.
All right, so the recommendation is for the Thomases from.
From, from Dave, yeah.
Okay, so, uh, I'm seeking a motion to approve, uh, the bus purchase, whatever the motion wants to be, but the recommendation is for the bid from high state. And because it's not the lowest bid, do we have to be specific about justifying our reasoning?
Um, the reasoning would just be the past experiences of how the international and the cost that, you know, related to all the repairs.
And is there availability, there, again, there is availability. We think there is a.
According to the salesman, they told me that, those are the dates that they told me.
All right, is there a motion regarding the bus bid?
There is a war going on, so I'm not gonna guarantee anything.
I'll make a motion that we, of more than a second.
Ralph Rosenthal moves to award the bus bid to I State or the Thomas. Is there a second? Is there a second? Is there any discussion? Uh, with rationale and the discussion being that, uh, previous experience with the international bus was unfavorable availability of the, the Thomas buses indicated will be available more timely. Maybe, no? Okay, never mind.
This way we'll get more miles out of our old bus before we have to.
Good, good comment. All right, any other discussion? Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Okay, next we have staffing. The first item is resignations. Uh, there is a resignation in your packet, which we do not have to act on because it's classified staff. Uh, we've received a resignation from Brooke Gamon as a kitchen aide effective March eighteenth. So, thank you to Brooke for her work here and best wishes. Uh, the other two resignations in our packet, two, three, three resignations in our packet um, are from high school English teacher, Mr. Wentworth, who I believe has accepted a position, uh, as school counselor with the SRCTC and will be serving us here in Olts. Uh, from Lee Delahoye, um, and from Madison Taylor, who, uh, kindergarten teacher who was accepted a position, she indicates that. Does she say that?
Yes.
I knew that. Uh, and then Lee, Lee Delahoye, our fourth through six, what's her position? E L A?
E L A.
E L A teacher. So, we need a motion, um, regarding those three or individual resignations. All, of course, effective at the end of the school year. I'll write a motion to accept them. Nagel moves to accept the resignations of Wentworth, Delahoye, and Taylor. Is there a second?
Second.
Rosendale's second, thank you. Uh, is there any discussion? I'd just like to thank them all for their. Yes. Thank you. Uh, I too appreciate all that they've done and looking forward to Mr. Wentworth in his new role. That's a, if his letter indicates that his relationships that he's formed will be a positive, and I agree with that, and any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye, aye. Those opposed say no. Motion passes and thanks and appreciation to, um, Mr. Wentworth, Mrs. Delahoye, and Ms. Taylor. Best wishes on their future endeavors. Next, uh, library para, are you bringing this to our attention?
I'm gonna be honest with you, it came from me.
Okay, um, so the librarian approached me and asked the, um, ability for the current para in the library to go from six hours to a regular para scale, which is seven point two five, two, five hours. And her reasoning, I had her write up the reasonings for it. Um, there's that shift between the public library and school library, and so you never know with the public library, if Jean is there, then she's short those last hours of the day. And so she was hoping that Amber could stay and just fill the whole day. Um, they're not opposed to helping out if classes need Amber. Uh, she said that they could work up their schedule, so if there's a class period that she needs to go to a different classroom to help out the students she can for that, for time to, um, in the morning to work out their schedules. So, I kinda put in there right now, it's six hours a day is nineteen thousand, raising it to seven and a half hours is twenty-nine thousand. So it's about a nine thousand dollar increase in the library budget.
What, um, I guess my question is do what the library, where's the librarian going?
They work together. Um, so I believe in Anna, you might feel that, and like, when they go to library, Krista usually sits with them and has like a class and then Amber runs.
She'll lead them to work on skills, you know, because there's research and library technology, things like that, and then I believe Amber checks out how the city and the S rates are related to this.
And helps the other students.
I don't know what she does with high school, that's what she does with my little.
Okay.
So my question is, when, when I, when I reviewed this a little bit when we set up the agenda, is that currently we do not have a, our junior high, our junior high para that we lost has not been replaced.
I, I don't wanna take that away, because I know Mr. Bitter has some ideas of, of, he's still looking. And if we can find somebody, he would still like to have somebody there, um, and that would look at more of a, a, uh, place for study hall type place for that para, so it'd be a supervision on a classroom, which they can do that as a study hall. Um, so I don't wanna take away that position, this would be an additional piece to that.
But for, for the remainder of this school year or for the immediate time being, is it possible to expand the hours that she is working, and is that what you would recommend, or what, what do you recommend?
I guess I've been kinda left out of this completely, so I'm, I'm not quite sure what I should recommend. Um, if they're needing the help, I guess at that point, we would have to really do some revaluation on that, but I, I know the committee has moved forward with recommending to, to expand her hours.
Expand? What committee?
The, by financial committee, that's who met on this.
Well, the negotiations.
Negotiations, sorry.
No, we just discussed it a little bit.
Yeah, we didn't recommend.
No.
That's what I understood.
No, it was just brought to our attention, that's it.
That is a possibility.
Yeah.
So does this need more discussion then, for, uh, for beginning?
I, I think she must need the help, otherwise she wouldn't be asking for it. So I, I mean, if a staff member needs help, I just wish that she would actually come to me instead of going alternative directions to go around me to get to this. If, 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 is the only guy I would ask in the future.
It was brought up to you as a budget question, but you should have deflected it. I, I guess I would rather wait and have more thorough review and, and get your.
I, I think if she's asking for it, I think it's something that's needed. I, I, I can definitely see from what April's saying, I could definitely see where that would be a need. I'm just, like I said, uh, my concern is I think it should be something that, if it needs to be done properly in the future.
Okay, so, so you would not be opposed to us acting on this today? And approving or disapproving?
Especially because it was already cleared with the budget wise, make sure that it's good.
All right, um, so a motion would be in order one way or the other, or if no motion, then we'll move on. So, this would be for this year and then going forward as well, correct?
Correct.
All right, if there is no motion, we'll move on. I'd like to just wait, look at it again. And there is no motion, we will then move on to, um, twenty twenty-two, twenty-three salary adjustment proposals, and this is, so, so someone lead us through the, the information in the packet, I believe the, uh, the certified and coaching columns on the table would be, that's part of the, what, it is from the negotiated agreement and then uh, classified and admin are what we need to approve as, um, because those are not set for two years, all right? Who will lead us through this? Well, when we met, we just discussed, um, doing the same percentage of increase for classified and admin as we did for certified. Um, and April wrote down the cost of what that would be. So that's our recommendation, recommendation to do a two percent increase across the board. All right? Um, is there a motion to accept the twenty-two, twenty-three salary adjustment proposals? This would be for classified and admin, two percent across the board. Estimated increases would be, uh, certified and coaching, current negotiating agreement are a hundred eleven thousand five fifty and forty-one hundred and fifty dollars. Those are not what we're acting upon because those come from the negotiated agreement. So what we're being asked to act on are classified and addition then of thirty thousand two twenty-five and admin eleven thousand seven eighty-eight, which the classified would be less because that didn't include. Oh, I see, yeah, and that was about nine thousand dollars. Okay, okay, so that would be more like twenty-one thousand. All right, is there a motion to approve those adjustments, the salary adjustments of classified and admin? Nagel moves to approve the classified and admin salary adjustment proposals. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thor, seconds. Is there any discussion?
Uh, my, my question would be, is there the state reimbursement that go up one percent or what did that go for this?
So, the, the states gave us a one percent and then they took it about three quarters of that back, if I remember correctly, it could be off on that three quarters uh, back for updating the star system. So you got about a quarter increase from the state and you're gonna give out about a two percent. Back to, I think you're going back to referring to what I talked about earlier here, that we gotta understand that if the state's not gonna give us the sufficient money, where are we gonna get this money from? Because somewhere we gotta figure out where we're gonna start getting this money to bring these raises for, for next year in the future.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none. I think we'll ask for a roll call vote, please. Okay, Rosendale?
Yes.
Thor?
Yes.
Nagel?
Yes.
Heimbuck?
Yes.
And, yes, motion passes, five to zero. The next item on the agenda is girls' basketball coach. I think that was covered, um, the narrative was in your, um, your superintendent's report. My recollection, wasn't it?
Can I just make a second comment? Just, just so everybody's aware, at, when I, when you guys offered me this position, that was one of the things, as I said, I would definitely bring this back. And I wanna make sure that you understand, this is just me pulling up my end of the bargain and bringing that back. I know there was some public that was asking about lights on here, and, uh, I think that needed to be clarified so that everybody knows this isn't you guys pushing this. This is something that was part of the deal when I took the position, uh, this had to be reached.
And, and it's listed under action items. Is it necessary for us to take action today, given that we're in, you know, we're in our contract period when perhaps, um, perhaps we would have an applicant in the future coming, uh, for an opening that may have interest in that position, I.
You can obviously table anything you wanna table. Yes, most definitely you can table anything. I, as far as the recommendation, that's up to you guys if you wanna do that. We're tabling it helpless as far as getting another teacher. At this day and age, I don't think it's gonna change the fact of gaining a teacher because of coaching position. But at the same time, if that was the case, then I think at that point I would need to step down if you guys didn't continue. Just because I, I need to look out what's best for the kids, and, and my aspect is I can help a larger number of kids by getting a better teacher here, just because of a coaching position versus me continuing to coach and giving up a teacher, I guess that, I would have to lay out which one was better. In my eyes, it would be me giving up the coaching position so that we can get a better teacher. That's just the way I, I always look at this. So what's best for the kids?
I, I don't see that we need to take action on this, or, I mean, it I don't see we need to take action right now. Is anyone else? All right. All right, storm makeup days, help us understand.
So, the storm makeup days, and there's a lot of different ways that you can put this together, and, um, basically we've had four, uh, four makeup days, there was almost a fifth one, um, and I was very close to deciding on that one, but the, I did cancel the buses one day, um, and I found out later that that is in the handbook different, it's different in the policy versus what's in the handbook. So we're, we're trying to correct that, um, through the handbook and policy over the next, uh, all through the summer here, we'll get that corrected. Um, so I, I did realize I was trying to do what was best and safest. Uh, when I drove, every morning that I go out, I drive these roads, just so you're aware of this, I usually I'm on the roads for roughly two hours before I even make decisions. I know some of you get phone calls from me, just checking to see what it's like in your area, uh, just because I can't hit every road. Uh, and the day, data that I decided not to on that February first, uh, was basically because of the high winds and the high profile vehicles. Was more of a concern to me than anything. Uh, it wasn't so much that the roads were terrible, because I was out driving them. Obviously, I knew that the roads were pretty good shape, so that's, that's why it only, that, it was only four days. Um, but the other four days, we did call them off. The one, three of those were because the storm was actually storming, the last one was, um, I know I was driving around the night before and everything that was blowing out was pretty much blown back shut. Um, so that's why you'll notice I did take that extra day, I think it was February, it was the second, or March, no, we're in March. What was it? Yes, that, that Wednesday, and I, I did that on purpose because of, by time everything would have cleaned out, I, I probably wouldn't have been able to get enough staff here to supervise our kids until about noon. Um, and a three hour school day is just not going to be conclusive of any learning, so that's, that's purpose of why I did that extra day on there. So we do have four days that we truly, truly have to make up. Um, there is hours that are built in for contact time, and I, I should clarify that, so the, our school day is longer than a normal s- school day, so that is built up time for contact time. That extra time, the governor, the legislation has asked us to make sure that we're holding our, our systems still accountable and our teachers are still being accountable for the hours that they need to in their contract. So I, I know that I've made recommendations to not have school on those days. Um, I, it was, it was brought forward that I need to continue making sure that I'm following policy and I'm following contracts and all that uh, by the, the O A A system, uh, so I'm going to change a little bit of my recommendation around a little bit, so that I, I, those are contact hours versus contract hours. And contact hours is the teachers in front of the students. That is set by the state of that thousand fifty that you're seeing, or that nine hundred and fifty-two and a half hours. That is contact hours. Now, contract hours is what you guys agreed to as your negotiation agreement. If you guys forgive these two, four days, that would mean that the teachers' contracts would be four days shorter. Now, how you wanna go forward with that is if you forgive those, they're basically going to be given that money and paid for those days without anything being made up. I will say that I know, um, we're always looking for ways to give more time with our teachers as far as for professional development, and however, we're always short time and needing time for those type of things. So I, I guess my recommendation is, is probably that we look at using, um, I got the calendar here, that Easter Monday and that Tuesday as professional development days. And then the twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh as professional development days, so we're still holding true to our taxpayers and we're fulfilling the contract according to the contract as written.
Say that again, because I think you just said, okay, Monday and Tuesday, Easter Monday and Tuesday, school days?
Professional development.
Professional development days, and then?
The twenty-sixth was one of those as a makeup day.
Twenty-sixth of?
May.
Okay.
And the twenty-seventh of May, then you would make up those four days that were being missed. For the contract, not school days, it would be P D days.
The twenty-sixth is listed as a professional development day, if you may suspect that from that.
If you look right down here under makeup days, it's May twenty-sixth.
So if we forgive the four, how many contact days or hours will we have?
You'll still have contact, total contact hours, you're still over eighteen days. Yeah, if I remember correctly. No, sorry, there's eighteen days and we'll take four away, so it'll be fourteen left of contact.
But I'd rather my kids went to school on the nineteenth, because that's my first day off. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, so you're not supposing that school be in session the two days after Easter?
Yes, my recommendation, yes.
Okay.
We have professional development days.
But kids get a freebie, but the staff not. Okay, so we're talking about the staff working the April eighteenth and nineteenth, but not school in session. Okay, so we're talking about the staff working the April 18th and 19th, but not school in session and the school being in session on the 26th and 27th.
No, that would be professional development.
Well, oh, so no additional classes?
Give us time to be working with our, our teachers. As we've always been needing extra time, it would help us to maybe fill some of those gaps that we've been missing. Right. There's that. There's a training we just had yesterday on requisitions that we can be adding into there. There, I mean, it's, there's just lots of things that we're paying our teachers extra dollars for. And now we're going to give them four days off on top of it. This would help us maybe alleviate some of that. Is the goal behind it.
Max, I don't know if I'm allowed to ask this or not, but classified staff, the reason why you have those makeup days is because those who don't get snow days, then they still get paid. So if we're forgiving those four days for the nine months, like the parents in kitchen, are you considering paying down part of the days that we missed because of snow? Because we've done that, you know, that one year where?
That one year, but didn't the state chicken, state forgave them that year?
Yeah, so I don't know if that's something to drop it.
All right, so that may be a matter of policy. Do we have policy on?
And it's up to the board to decide.
Oh, great. Thanks. Well, I think, I think we should act separately then to approve the, whatever changes to the calendar that we want to approve. And then to take that matter separately and perhaps some of those, some, some classified staff, perhaps Paris, maybe appropriate, some Paris may be appropriate to be included in the professional development. The custodial staff certainly has work to do. Maybe other, you know, other work can be found for them. So they would give them for doing nothing. But anyway, a separate motion would be in order, I think, for the calendar changes. So, is there a motion?
I think the staff would like Easter Monday off. I think that would be something nice, rather than having to come in for two days when there's no, no students here. And I realized that development time is a piece too, but or a part of it, I should say, but that's my thought. I think they let Easter Monday off. I mean.
What was the last Easter?
I just, they never come in off.
Right, it happens frequently, so.
Is there a motion regarding the calendar? Recommendation is that April 18th and 19th be professional development days with no school in session. And May 26th and 27th be in school days. No, to promote more to professional development.
So April 18th, April 19th, May 26th and May 27th as professional development days with no school in session.
That, that is what the recommendation is that I understand. There is no motion on the floor either.
And if you remember, I mean, if you read through my report there, you'll see there's, there's a number of different scenarios that you can go. And it's endless. So, yes, right. Yeah, you're right. It's ultimately 100% your guys' decision. I'm just bringing forward with, as a recommendation.
Well, because I understand that it is okay on a five-member board that president can make a motion, I'll move to approve the recommendation of administration to have April 18th and 19th, 20, and May 26th and 27th as professional development days with no school in session. Is there a second?
I will say.
Nagel seconds. Is there any discussion? There's been discussion. Is there anything else that anyone wants to add? I would just say that I, you know, I, I don't have kids in school, but I think it may be better to have a, a day of, at least one day of additional school contact, teacher-student contact. But on the other hand, I know that we frequently here, we just, our teachers just don't have time to collaborate to do what they feel they need to do to do what's best for the kids when they are here. So if this is what our administration recommends, I, I support it. Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? I'm sorry. Oh, yes.
It's a different calendar change too, because that teacher work day, that was the 26th. So that's that extra contract day. Like if the teachers haven't met all their PD, they have to work that day. And that would have been the 26th. So now I'm assuming that would get pushed to the Tuesday, right? Because Monday would be Memorial Day. Right? And so then Tuesday would be the teacher work day.
Kind of counter back both of them, whatever I was looking at, yes.
I was just thinking for just to inform my teachers, because they're going to want to know, like, if they haven't done those six days, seven extra days, they're going to have to come in and do that work day after school, so.
I would still continue to leave that as a work day. If they're not done, I would still have that.
That's easy.
Because you know, one of those two days is going to be to fulfill end of year duties.
And could a teacher do end of year duties on a Saturday, for example? Is that acceptable?
I don't know. I mean, in the past, it's always just been that day after school. And most of the teachers aren't here anyways, because they've already fulfilled their hours. And they just come in and do their room. And most of them, they just give it back to us, right? They just come, they do their jobs. They're just here, even if they've already got their seven hours. I'd say 90% of their students probably do that or higher.
All right, any other discussion? Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Is it necessary for us to take up the matter of the classified staff compensation at this time? Or can we wait until next? I, I mean, classified staff that may not need to work on those PD days, is that, or can we?
I would maybe just open it up as option for them to come into the PE as well. And they can use that. The only bad part is your bus drivers and cooks would be the only others, custodians, that give them extra time to go work towards.
Custodians won't get snow days because they're 12 months. If you're nine-month employees, food services and parents, the office besides Carrie, and then all your regular bus drivers, they're just, I'd be like Don Warren. So those are the ones that we would compensate for the days that we.
So do we?
That's not in their contract. That was something that's totally separate.
So if we take no action, they won't be paid. But in, if we could, we could take action at a future board meeting to, to change that. Okay, excellent. Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda, item F, tuition reimbursement program. There's information in our packet regarding a request from now kindergarten teacher, soon to be fourth through sixth teacher, right? Katie Johnson requesting tuition reimbursement for curriculum and instruction master's degree. Your recommendation is that this would benefit?
Yeah, yeah.
I will make that motion. And I believe in the past, we've done 75% of that. There is an example tuition increments in our packet, which includes that the district will pay 75% of tuition books for fees. And the rate at which that would be forgiven and that it would be paid back if she, if she leaves the district before. Would the promissory note be separate to them? I noticed that she has sat up for four years. Stayed up here for four years. I didn't see her in the tuition.
After like, basically, I just looked in the past to see what we did for other teachers. And this was the agreement that other teachers, I know for TLA, they have two separate documents they sign. But since TLA is kind of different, but I can definitely just kind of amend the TLA agreement for that.
Right. I don't see in this document that the length of time that's required to stay. So I think.
I think it kind of does in a way, because it says, once a degree is completed, the cost of education will be forgiven at a rate of 25% per year, beginning with the first year following. So technically, it'd be four years if she wants 100%.
Okay, so.
Did you even say on that?
Yeah, I get what you're saying. I just, I thought it was kind of a package deal, like either a dollar or nothing. So after the first year, you bring 25% or she stays for four years and she doesn't give.
We forgive 25% a year.
Per year, which essentially, yes, she has to stay for four years. So I'll pay it back. Just, it just says in your, in your notes, Katie will have to sign a promissory note to remain in the PLS through the degree of four years after this.
Right, she could always get out early.
To, right.
She would just have to pay back 25%.
Unforgiven.
Yeah.
Just one confirmation of that.
Would be the same as like a TLA member too, right? If they don't stay the full four years, they would still have to pay it back at a 25%.
I just wanted clarification.
Yeah, good question.
Okay, is there a motion with regard to Mrs. Johnson's request for tuition reimbursement? Oh, you did, sorry. And did we second it? No, there's no second in the motion. Thank you. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion, trusting that the documents would be very clear as, as our others have been in the past, we have administered them in the past and have been working. So any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no. Motion passes. And good luck to Mrs. Johnson. Happy studies. Facilities committee, I didn't see anything in our packet. Is there something you report?
Yeah, this was thrown in at last, kind of last minute.
So it was in the packet at all?
It wasn't, it wasn't part of the packet. This, this, we met after we were able to talk about it. And so there wasn't really a lot of, it was more discussion and you guys can jump in at any time here. We did review and look at different avenues of how we could go forward with our facilities and trying to improve some of the things that are major. We looked at the HVAC or something that has got a lot of wear and tear on it, but at the same time, is it feasible for us to do this at this time? We looked at the windows, we looked at the, we talked about sewer. We didn't really get a quote for that at this point, to finish up the sewer. We also talked about windows, the science room floor was another one that we talked about. And we kind of came to the conclusion that when we started looking at putting this together as a whole big package, your, your estimation was right around that $5 million. So that was a little bit higher than what we were thinking is going to be feasible for us to be able to complete all of it. So we tried to break it down and, and we're making a recommendation, the committee, committee is making a recommendation that we move forward with planning for the windows and science room floor. The reason for the science room floor is because of the fact that it's starting to really sag and, and they're getting to that point to where we don't want to get a safety issue. We want to make sure that we're being proactive. It was pushed off once before. Because we were able to do that, we wanted to just make sure that we're not taking a safety issue and putting that chance into our school system. So that was the reason why they recommended moving forward with the science room floor. The reason we recommended moving forward with the placement of the windows and getting that drawing up is because we have the, and I always remember the Department of Commerce grant that we can go after. So that's potential half of that. And the other half could be paid with ESSR dollars. Currently, we have roughly that $600,000 to $700,000 left in our ESSR dollars that we put towards those windows as well. We don't know exact prices. We've just been given estimates from the architect at this point. There's no drawings being drawn up, but to be able to move forward with the drawings, we need a full board approval. Am I missing anything on that? You three? No, that's good.
Yeah, and just, I mean, the $5 million was, he just kind of wrapped everything up in what we could see as potential problems in the study that was done five or six years ago on our overall building, heating system, electrical system. The biggest problem is some of the heating system is still from the 1960s, some of it's from the 80s. Some of it's been updated since then, but the, the bulk of it is at least 40 years old. So it's like, it hasn't failed yet. Just trying to put together a long-term plan on how do we go about funding this dollars, which that's what I was worried about. I just made a slight comment on, before we got the numbers back, and that they're even higher than what, what they were. So how, how do we set the district up long-term to deal with this so that when it does happen?
Well, and the biggest part of it was that, that $5 million or whatever it was, was all estimates. It was by the architect. There's no bids. There was no contract. It was all just what I considered fluff numbers. They don't know what it is. They're architects. They don't. So this would give us a better idea of what it's going to cost. And we were, we talked about contacting the HVAC, heating, cooling contractors directly, just to try to get some budget numbers accurate in versus what it's going to cost. Because again, their, their estimates were just estimates. We don't know if it's, it's more than that or less than that. So that's why, but we, but we need drawings. We need estimates on the floor and the windows to even get bids, correct?
Correct.
But the heating cooling system, rather than paying for all the engineering of that, you could get some budget numbers from contractors that we already created.
And we're using Rita as our service there. But he has a lot of knowledge with that. So that's where we've asked Rita to help us with some of this.
Just so we have, it's hard to, like Robert said, to plan for future stuff. We don't know what things cost or have an accurate number of the costs.
The other thing that came up last minute at that meeting was our freezer went out for the second time. And then there was another freezer that went out earlier in years. This was our third time we've been without a freezer this year. So we were looking at some different prices there too. We sent that out to get more estimates as well. So more or less, just so you guys are aware that there is potential freezer coming, but right now we've kind of put that on hold as well.
So the facilities committee requests full board approval to proceed with more detailed drawings in some of the areas that are in this conceptual plan.
Just the windows and science.
Windows and science floor. All right. Good work, facilities committee. Is there a motion for board approval to proceed with drawings of the window replacement project in science?
And we add in there, do we want to put it off for bids right away too?
Is that's what the facilities committee wants? Prices are only in that first place.
They are, I guess. Worst case, we can not award anything.
Right.
We just take bids.
And I think, so I think that's part of that process, is we get the drawings and get them off the bids as fast as we can. So that way we don't have to have another meeting and just put it off for bids.
Worst case, we can say no.
Right.
Is, is there expense associated with getting the drawings? Certainly, but.
Yeah, I mean, and that is ridiculous too, but we don't really have a choice because you have to follow this procedure. State law requires us to stay out of the drawings.
And given that there, there's at least a chance that most, if not all, of the window projects may be covered with our ESSR dollars and potentially grants. Well, you know, let's, let's move forward. So is there a motion to proceed with drawings and, and so that I put out for bids, the window replacement and science? Heimbuck moves that motion. Is there a second? Thor seconds. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Would, would it be appropriate for you to send this document out to the board?
Do you have that on email still?
And, you know, as, as they said, the numbers are estimates, but at least you'll know what, you'll have in front of you what they, what they're looking at. All right, next we move on to school policy review. There are four policies in your packets that were recommended for amendments and for first, that we recommend for first readings. The first one, ABAB, school year and calendar, does have a decision that needs to be made as to whether we should include, we should list our kindergarten readiness testing and formative assessment dates in the school calendar. And I defer to Mrs. Self to be a part of this. Go ahead.
If that, I mean, it's a requirement that we do a kindergarten. It's a requirement that we do a kindergarten assessment, but those dates change because we rely on like Tracy comes down from the special ed unit and pull all of the people together and just set a date right now. I mean, it would get changed just because there's so many pieces that need to come together for the testing. So if that is So if that is not a requirement, that's just, just, I would, I would suggest not having it in there. And that would give me more freedom to set that date. Because we've never not had it. No, no, we always have it. Yeah.
The other amendment would be the event schedule. The building principles. Don't develop the practicing event schedules. It would be the activities director. So that would, that's another change I noticed.
Is it even necessary for us to have that line?
It's just another recommendation so we can.
I would. We'll, we'll just develop our, because they, they do it jointly between our two buildings. We, because we share facilities. I would just. All right. So, um, for, for first reading, we're going to not include item five and not include the, well, and then so, but there are some other changes incorporated. So, so we'll still have this as a first reading. All right. Uh, the other three are very federal and state administrative law and guideline regulation. I welcome you to read all that and compare it with federal code if you wish, but, um, I'll just.
Hard to get.
Okay. Any, any changes we should make? So with that, um, and then there was, there was one other policy recommended to be changed and, but the only change was that they recommended, uh, it's changed, it's changed just from recommended to required. And no board action is needed on that. And that is A B A C, virtual learning because of weather and other conditions. So we will not act upon that, but it will be changed in our records from recommended to required. And we already have the policy in an appropriate, yeah. So with that, I would entertain a motion to approve as first readings the four policies in our packets, A B A B, G C C, H B A A and H C A A.
I'll make a motion.
Rose and I'll move to the approval of the first reading of those four policies. Is there a second?
Oh, sorry.
Uh, Thor, seconds. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no. Motion passes of the first reading of those and we'll see them again next month. Moving on to the approval of the minutes of the February eighth meeting. They were in your package. Is there any, is there a motion to approve the minutes as presented? Nagel moves to approve the minutes as presented. Is there a second? I'm but seconds. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Looking at the uh, next item B, review of financial reports. We usually take these all as one motion, reconciliation, the balance sheet and the revenue and expense reports. April has provided us with the reports with comments, highlights. Anything you specifically want to highlight? Any questions?
All the notes already. I highlighted all the ESSR items just because of that in and out.
So let's follow. I, I looked through it, but, uh, just on the overall percentage, I mean, nothing as far as getting off track of budget.
No, besides our building fund, everything else is pretty much, what we expected, you know, like the activities director, we knew that would be over. So there's nothing, I guess, alarming.
And I have, I have noted, just the point. I have noted when we met about the agenda that, um, Mr. Gadsden, April have think that by the next meeting, we can have a more complete sort of analysis of where we are budget-wise or summary. But so it's about time to start thinking about next year's budget.
And I did post up pre-draft budget on there. Uh, one change is that I underestimated our foundation aid. Um, Adam Teich, this actually says it's a hundred thousand dollars higher on top date.
Well, that's.
Yeah.
Good job, Amy. All right. Any further discussion on those three financial reports? Is there a motion to approve? So Nagel most to approve the three financial reports. Is there a second? I'm but second. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Moving on to A, approval of bills. Were in your packet. There were a few more that came in late yesterday afternoon. Any? I, I noticed accent workplace and learning ink for classroom furniture. We're, we're.
So that was a first, um, back ordered furniture that we used for that as a night for distance.
That really like a year?
Yeah. So yeah, so it's actually through us. So we get reverse from that.
All right. Any other questions about the bills? Is there a motion to approve the bills as presented, including those that came out late yesterday? I'll make that motion. I'm but moves to approve the bills. Is there a second? Second. Nagel's seconds. Any discussion? Anything that you have questions on? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no. A motion passes and the bills are approved. Our next regular meeting date is Tuesday, April the twelfth at seven AM. Uh, we have been invited by our administration, uh, PCPL director or personalized learning coach, Mr. Dobitz and the student ambassadors, I believe. We are invited to stay uh, for, uh, as a, the board, uh, tour of the school with our OPS ambassadors that might last one and a half hours.
It said prepare for two just to be safe, but.
And included lunch. Lunch is included? All, it's an all-inclusive. So, uh, I mean, I know we, I'm afraid of that, but, um, is there any, and we'll try to keep the agenda as short as possible, um, but it would be marvelous if we could include a, a tour following that meeting. Any other suggestions as having?
Or you're not talking, you're talking for next time or today?
Next time, not today. No.
No. Meeting.
April twelfth.
We've got other schools in the school.
Well, that's what I thought it was.
So if that doesn't work, if there's another date that everybody can meet, I guess that would work as well. But we're, we're looking at doing is they would like to give you, uh, because we wanted to start setting up tours for next year. We're trying to start planning some of these where we're having like monthly tours, but we want you to be the first group of that. Um, so you'll be going in the classroom, seeing what the PCPL is and really trying to help push that PCPL piece out so that everybody has a better understanding and actually can see it in action that want to see that.
Okay.
But we would like the board to be the first to go and we know that you two have already went, but we've asked it as a group so that you guys can all see it together and you can have questions. So we would have to announce it as a meeting just so you're aware.
It's just.
Or continue on a meeting.
I know.
Yeah.
We knew that and we said that.
Right. I, if we tried to put it off, it, it, you're going to not be able to come. So I, I think, given that she was already been on a tour, uh, maybe if you could join for a few minutes and we can have a group picture or something, that would be great, but we understand.
But you're talking the, the twelfth.
April the twelfth. And.
Yeah, I mean, if we could. I don't think I'll be able to do the whole morning that day. So our twelve, that'd be a different story.
Um, we could even, I mean, if we're typically getting done with our meetings early enough, we could, we could maybe even have breakfast as, instead of staying for lunch. So, um, you can stay for the whole tour and you get to have lunch too. All right. So please keep that in mind, um, and we will plan for it. Um, and as many as are able, I'd like to stay. With that, is there anything else for the good of the order? If not, thank you all for being here and I'll declare the meeting adjourned at eight thirty-seven, eight ten.